Can the meeting come to order? Since we don't have a flag in the area, we will... Chuck, you have an update for us?
Yes, I do Ed. I appreciate you guys entertaining us again. And I was happy that Emery has some time to come and talk. I just want to give a brief overview on the Cedar Street well number one and the Diaz property groundwater exploration. And then I'll turn it over to Emery. But she and our staff have made great progress in pulling together the reports. Basically, there's two reports. One talks about the Cedar Street well replacement. The other one is a pump test or in the groundwater exploration as a whole with the Diaz property. And the second is a letter proposal to Mass DEP that's required in order to replace the Cedar Street well number one. And that report is in draft form. I met with Jeff today and spoke to him about it at around 2:00 today, just to give him a brief overview. And it's still in draft form. We're going to go through our final QA QC over the next week or so. And we'll have that, both those reports to you within the next week or so. And Emery's going to talk a little bit about the project, obviously, and what we found, but also share, if she can, some figures that I shared with you as well. Those are in draft form. I probably should have stamped them draft, but they probably won't change too much. You know, they pretty much show the information that we want to show, but we just haven't had it properly reviewed yet. So that should happen within the next week's time, and then we'll forward it along. So I'll turn it over to Emery, and she can talk a little bit about that project and give you an update.
Okay. So I'm going to try. I'm not sure about doing this, the screen share, is that what I do?
Tina, have you made screen share available to everyone that they can share screen?
That I don't know.
It says host disabled.
Give it a try. Sometimes there's permissions that have to be set up, but I'm not sure if they are.
Well, Emery can give it a go, and we'll see what happens.
Well, I did. And when I try, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. So the host, I guess, needs to enable it?
Yeah, that's correct. So that would be you, Tina. You'd have to enable screen share. So if you go down to the bottom, I think it's either on the bottom or it's in the top right. It should say allow participants to share screen.
There's a little green button at the bottom.
Yeah, I don't have the host function, so...
There we go, I think.
Nice.
Maybe...
So that's Tina, that's yours, right?
Yeah, that's Tina's. Request remote control. I'm going to request it, see what happens. I can control it, I guess. I still have your screen, I think.
Right.
I'm controlling your screen.
Yeah.
So no, it's a permission where you will click on that green share screen button. So Tina, if you go down to, if you go down on the bottom of your screen where the controls are, where the mute, the start video...
Yep.
You have a share screen button down there. And there should be a control button in there that tells you you can allow others to share screen.
Let's see, go to advanced.
No, it's sharing hers, so I can only use her screen. But not my stuff.
Yeah, so Tina, hit stop sharing on yours.
Oh, did that work?
No.
Do you see... Can you see the site map?
No.
No, I can, but I didn't know if it was sharing it or not.
Try now. I know multiple participants can share.
Yeah, that should be it. Now you should be able to...
Click it, so she should be also.
I have to take it, I think. There we go. I'm going to share that. Can you see the site map?
No.
Nope.
So I am... Select a window or application you want to share. I want to share that one.
You should be able, so all of what you have open should come up in yours. And if you click on it, there you go. So Chuck, did you just share that?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up the figures, so...
So if you open up any one of those files, it should open up, and you should be able to be showing that file.
Hold on a minute. What am I sharing now?
Select a window.
I'm going to stop sharing.
Yeah, Emery, it should show you all of your windows that you have open, and you just...
There it is. I think I got it. So I want to share that one. You are screen sharing, so can you see it now?
I think it might be me, and I have to stop.
You guys are lucky I'm even here, so I'm not getting involved with this. You know, no idea.
It says that I'm sharing, you are screen sharing.
All right, well, we got to move on. We got to figure out, if you can't share it, you need to walk us through it.
I can do that, but I'm going to give it screen share. So I'm going to share that share. You still can't see it, huh?
No, I can see Chuck's screen. So it says to me, if I view the options...
Can you click stop share, Chuck?
Yeah, I'm trying to find that, and I'm not finding it.
It's at the bottom of your screen.
Or at the top.
I'm viewing Chuck's screen right now.
Chuck, at the top on mine, I can stop share or share.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that.
Oh, okay, I'm going to see if I can...
It's not... You know what I'll do is I'll just bounce out of the meeting, and then it should stop sharing, and then I'll come right back in, all right? Because I'm not...
Okay.
I see the controls there, but it's not coming up on my... It's... All right, I'll bounce out and then come back, all right?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
Oh, wait a minute. It's not working, okay.
All right, was... Did we lose Tina?
No, I'm here.
Tina, disable share. Disable remote control of it again. There it is.
Is that me?
There's a file.
Oh, well, could you see the site map?
Yeah. Is that you or me?
That's me. I'm sharing my screen.
Okay, good.
So I think we're good.
Yeah, sorry about that, I got in the way.
That's all right. Okay, so I thought I would start with the exploration we worked, we did out there, and those results. And then I'll review the results of the replacement well exploration. So a little background. This map shows the Diaz parcels, these two up here, and the one on the east. And then these two are the district parcels. So what we did on this map is we looked at the area that the town, the district would be able to site a water supply well and still own and control their zone one. And for a single well with a pumping rate over 100,000 gallons per day, you need the 400-foot zone one. So 400 feet from the property line would be this blue line in the middle. So that would say anywhere in here, in the blue line, I can cite a single water supply well. If you have a well field which consists of three or more wells within 50 feet of each other, all pumping at the same time, or at least three wells pumping at the same time, you only need a 250-foot zone one. So we could expand the area out to this red line. So if we want to cite a well field, we can go out to this red line. So essentially, and then on top of that, we put all the wetland layer, we put the wetland layer from Mass GIS, and we said, okay, we're going to need a 100-foot buffer from the wetlands. So that's what this gray shading is here. I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but...
Yeah.
So that leaves, okay, anywhere, well, this green dot shows where I could cite a single well. So it's really just this little area here. And so most of the area, I mean, we'd need to do a well field. And that would include this whole area out here. So Chuck and I went out with Jeff, and we had Marsh Services, and we walked the site. There's a path that runs up the middle. And when you get out to this area, the Diaz property, that's where they had done a lot of sand and gravel mining. So there were large boulders, and there's trees. So we had a pretty, we had not a very limited area, but about 120 feet north-south, 120 feet east-west that we could explore. And so this map shows where we did our exploration. And again, the area here, so this is the 100-foot buffer from the wetlands in blue shading. This area here is inside the blue 400-foot zone one. So this is really the only location we could cite a single well. All in this area, we would do a well field. And we did a total of 13 borings out there. And, you know, it's very, it's highly variable. It was mapped as coarse sand and gravel. Most of the material, I think the sand and gravel was probably shallow and at the surface. It's been mined out. We hit refusal anywhere from about 7 to 29 feet. And we kind of went in this order. So we started up here, B2, Test Well 2, was probably the best location we identified. We got down to 29 feet. The material was okay, but not great. And we developed the well for over an hour. And in the end, we had a very high vacuum indicating the material was fairly tight. And this was the best pumping rate we had out here, and it was 10 gallons a minute. By comparison, over at where we did the replacement well exploration, we were pumping 39 gallons a minute. So this material was pretty tight. We looked, we poked holes all over. We went, first we went towards the south. You can see refusal at 17 and a half feet, 19 feet, 7 feet, 9 feet. So we went over to the east and looked there. Again, refusal was 19 or 20 feet. And by the time you put in a 5-foot well screen and you needed 2-foot buffer, now you're looking at, you know, you can draw the well down to 12 feet, and the water table was at 3 or 4 feet. It really doesn't leave you a lot of available drawdown. And on top of that, most of the material in this area was, had a lot of fine-grained silt and sand in there. We actually went to this direction. This line is actually the Diaz line, so it doesn't really mean anything, so ignore that. I want to get that off there. So we had, we put in three wells that we pumped, so this was the best location. Again, we were 29 feet, we were able to pump 10 gallons a minute. Over here at B12, we went there at the end, we got down to 27 feet. Again, the material was finer grained with, it's usually a mix of fine sand, gravel, some silt. There, we were able to pump 3 gallons a minute. And then I said, okay, here's where they had mined out most of the sand and gravel. When you get up to this area, it's higher, it's flat. I said, let's put one boring up here. I know we don't have the zone one, but when I looked on a map, I could see further to the north, whoever owned the property to the north, it was all wetlands. So the town, if we were to find good material, may be able to get an easement or purchase the zone one area. When we got up here, and that was probably the worst location we had, we got down to 28 feet, but the water just trickled out. So none of these locations could pump much water. So that was discouraging. And then I did want to point out, again, because of where we were able to go, this map shows this whole area is really available for further exploration if we wanted to do it. We weren't able to go any further than here just because of trees and boulders, and this was, the limit of our scope was really two borings. But we, since we couldn't get very deep, we couldn't pump a lot of water, we kept looking. And then the next figure, which you have, this shows the same area, and this is the mapped, USGS mapped superficial geology. And the orange color here is the coarse glacial stratified deposits. This is what we're looking at. You can see, actually, down here, we're Cedar Street well number one. It's just an isolated area within this purple, which is swamp and marsh deposits. I think it's really like hit or miss in this area. So again, if we go to the east in this direction, there's a large area that we couldn't explore because it was not accessible. And we have an area to the west that we could explore, but it really wasn't accessible at this point. So I guess what that says is, in this immediate area, we really did not find anything that could produce significant amounts of water. And again, most of this, you would need to find, you'd have to cite three wells to do a well field. But, you know, what are the chances of hitting this location for Cedar Street well number one? And that material ended up being pretty good. So that's how I would leave it, is if the town, if the district is still interested, I think there's area that we could explore, but we would need to do a lot of clearing to get out there, so...
What about going deeper? What about getting the right equipment and go down further than 27, whatever we can get to?
At that point, you're going to hit a dense till. You can see on this map, this whole area is underlaid by till and bedrock. So the till, really most of southeast Massachusetts, once you get below these sand and gravel, you're going to hit this dense till and then bedrock. So none of that's really productive unless, you know... The till is definitely not a productive aquifer.
I've got a lot of questions, so I'll just...
Well, I'm going to leave it to you. It's all yours.
So, Emery, I'm Derek Black, I'm one of the commissioners. So if you could go back to the other screen for me, the original Cedar one that's pumping water now, we hit 300 gallons a minute right behind it, 20 feet behind the pump station. So your green dot now is where we're pumping now. 20 or 25 feet behind that dot, we hit 300 gallons a minute. Are you saying, are you saying that within the 400 feet of a new well field, so we, oh, new well spot, so we can't drill there, correct? Or we can?
You mean in this area? We have to be up in this area.
So Chuck, your point...
So if we want to get outside the wetland buffer, we have to be up here.
Well, I thought there was two phases of this. The first phase was replacing Cedar one with a new well. And phase two was adding a secondary well behind it. Is that true?
Well, the way it was set up, and I, the next thing I was going to talk about is the replacement well. So we were looking for a replacement well. And I will tell you, we found a really good location for your replacement well. It has a well capacity around 300 gallons a minute, and it's about 70 feet from the existing well.
Okay, so we'll go back to the original, we'll go back to your original plot, 300 or 400 feet behind there. And the questions I have, I understand that we're not finding water to 30 feet. And when you said refusal, the driller that went out there could have hit a boulder the size of my office, correct? And that's why you couldn't, you couldn't go down any further because they hit granite or a piece of boulder or anything else. I used to work at a golf course that had six-inch, eight-inch casings that went down into the bedrock, down 200 or 300 feet, that produced between 50 and 200 gallons a minute. If there's no water back where we drilled down to 30, can we, if we had the right drilling equipment, can we go down 200 or 300 feet and put a bedrock well in and produce water?
You could do a bedrock well. There's no guarantee that you're going to produce water because you would want to hit fractures.
Correct. I agree with you.
And so you could do a bedrock geology study and look for areas that have higher fracture zones or some sort of liniments that align in a certain direction, so there might be some fault zones there. Don't see a lot of bedrock wells in this area. I've done bedrock well in Hanover, and we actually, it was an irrigation well, it ended up being a very good well. But I, you know, having done work in Norfolk and Foxborough, no one's really done a lot of bedrock wells.
We had nine wells at the golf course in Dartmouth, Mass, and we had very good luck with them. I'm not saying that this would be a good spot. It's that because of the trunk line going to the treatment plant is actually on this property, and the electricity, and we have a chance to get this major grant, does it offset us actually pursuing a bedrock well as well as pursuing to the east? I mean, if we had our employees, you know, during the slow time, cut a path and get in there towards the east, I understand what you're saying, it could be a shallow well, and in the meantime, should we look at a bedrock well and not exhaust a piece of land that is kind of prime to us because of the utilities? And majorly, the trunk line was all the way to the treatment plant. That was my question to you.
Uh-huh. Yeah, it's, you'd want to do a study to see, you know, what the potential is for this area to have a fractured bedrock. We didn't even look at what the bedrock consists of here. So, you know, we could do that kind of reconnaissance study. Obviously, it's cheaper to get the water from the overburden, so that's why most towns look there.
Yep.
And like I said, I don't know too many towns that have actually, when you get up into Vermont, New Hampshire, there's a lot of bedrock wells.
Well, if we can produce 40 or 50 gallons a minute out of a bedrock well times 3 or 4, now we're up to the 200 range, and that's what we need. I just don't, or even if it's a 30 gallon a minute times 3, 90 gallons is better than 20. And I understand, and I talked to the kid a lot that was doing the drilling over there, he said, like you said, that the silt is so fine on that side of the street, because it's crazy how Cedar 2 and Cedar 3, we have no problems with those wells. But Cedar 1, it seems like the silt is a lot finer, and that's the reason why that this, the well, when they start out at 300 gallons, eight months or nine months later, they end up at 40. I mean, I talked to a well driller the other day, Frank Sylvia, and he said that the technology is a lot better also. I don't know how you feel about that.
So I have a question along those lines. So what is the cost of developing a bedrock well that's 200 or 300 feet deep versus a traditional development of a well that we have here? Is it two, three, I'm not saying, give me an actual figure, but is it two times, three times, four times? What, in a comparison sense?
And this is just going to be a guess, but to have a larger diameter, you know, you're looking at an 18-inch well into bedrock, I would say you're probably more like five or 10 times more. And I have not done water supply bedrock wells, I've done irrigation wells. The exploration could be, it's obviously going to be more expensive too, because you need to hit a fracture. So you may be doing a lot of borings before you find a fracture.
So my real question is, if that is truly one of the few alternatives that we may have, who knows? We don't know what our other alternatives are. How does DEP look at bedrock wells and approval of bedrock wells as additional wells versus the traditional, you know, shallower wells that we've done in the past? Because I know it's a little different, you know, when DEP has their hand in the pot versus someone that's doing something for their own.
Right. DEP, in their Chapter 4, Groundwater Supply and the New Source Development, they have specific criteria for citing a bedrock well. And it's very similar to an overburdened well, but I think you need like a 15-day pump test instead of, and I'm not positive, but I believe that's what you need, instead of the five-day pump test. But they have similar criteria. I don't think DEP, you know, has, it's not, it's, that wouldn't be a restriction for permitting the well so much as finding a zone and getting enough water out of it.
I think that was one of the questions last month was, is there, is there, if we choose to go that route, do we encounter any other roadblocks?
No, I think, you know, one of the things I would say is, you know, we could talk to some local drillers that do bedrock wells. That's, they know the best in terms of how deep you'd have to go, and we could look into that a little bit.
I've got a couple of calls out to a couple of local companies, Emery, that I'm waiting to hear back on. I don't know if you've heard from these companies at all, I'm just trying to catch it up on my phone while I'm talking to you. They are, let's see here, Brian Giblin, they are New England Wells and Pump, 979-732-4803. And Northeast Wells, they're a deep bedrock well company. And I think one of those companies did the wells over at the Bedford Country Club, and it's actually only a six-inch casing, not 18, because you're only putting, you're only putting a two-inch piece of steel pipe, you can't use plastic that deep, and the well pump is down at the bottom. So it's actually only a six-inch casing and a normal...
Six-inch casing.
Yeah.
And a two inch well.
Normal well is a four inch. So, it's only a little bit bigger. But I don't know if that's, I mean.
Right, so that would just be a restriction on the size pump you could put in the well.
Correct, correct. And like you said, we'd have to do a well field so we could get more gallons per minute or more wells in the buffer zone. Does that open up our parameter, correct, if we do a well field?
I'm sorry?
It opens up a bigger zone if we do a well field?
Well, as long as, so for a well field, you can't draw down the well more than, that's a good point, 28 feet below ground surface.
Okay.
So, that would limit, and so if you had a single well in this zone, if you could find water there, you can pump it down to, you know, as deep as your screen is. But in the case of a well field, you can only draw it down to 28 feet. It's got to be a shallow pumping zone.
Okay.
And I will say, like, so one of the first water supply sites I ever worked on, it was the bedrock well site that we did. And we were proposed to drill down to 100 feet. And the driller said, you have to go deeper. You have to go to 150 to 170 feet. Look for these little white pebbles that come up. They look like teeth. And literally, we went down another 50 feet. He knew exactly what he was talking about because that's what he does. And we had a good well. So, the local drillers may have some information. Like I said, I don't know a lot of bedrock wells. Most people try to get their water out of this overburden. But again, it's.
Oh, you're right. No, I agree with you. So, and then step two, Phase two is replacing the Cedar one, right? So, we'll put that on the back burner for now and see if we can get some more information on the bedrock well. And then now is the replacement, so Cedar one, correct?
Yep. And then the only other thing we could do in the next phase, if we wanted to bring out a Sonic drilling rig, you can get through boulders, not gigantic ones, but if it's a smaller boulder, it's a more expensive drilling method. But you can get through these, instead of like poking around, you could tell we had to go around. When we hit about 20 feet, I think we're hitting the dense till at that point, somewhere between 20 and 30 feet. But, you know, we hit shallow, we hit refusal at seven feet or 12 feet. That was probably a boulder.
Yeah, I would like to, before we do any spending money on anyone else, I think we need to have some actually well drillers that do this for a living and have a couple different opinions that do this all day long and see what they think out there.
In terms of a bedrock well or?
And both, and both. Because I mean, I saw the rig, I worked for the power company, and they do test sites all the time. And I know what that machine can do and not do. Like I said, I think we can maybe go a different avenue too as far as looking for water. I'm not saying it wasn't the right way, but there's so much rock out there, it's crazy. And I understand as soon as he hit refusal, he had to stop and move the rig. And that's a lot of money.
Right. Then, and again, the goal was, I mean, that's the most economical way because it is.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you. That's right. And, yep.
You get good samples. And we've done cable tool. Cable tool is tough because you don't get as good a samples. And like I said, Sonic would be, would probably be my next choice.
Okay. How about Cedar one? How can we, what are we talking, how do we go about that one now?
So, Cedar one looks good. Before we started the work out there, I called DEP. Because, you know, your existing well does not have a compliant Zone One. Here's the 400 foot Zone One radius for your Cedar Street well number one. And Cedar Street, you know, runs right through the Zone One. And for DEP, that can be an issue. If they, they would accept a replacement well on a case by case basis is what they said. And I explained to them, and they said, the town, the district, if they could make up that water at one of their other locations or a new location, the DEP would prefer that as opposed to a replacement well. And I think, you know, after talking to Jeff, you're not going to be able to replace that volume somewhere else. You know, maybe we could have at the Diaz property if we found a good location. But, so that's going to be our, so that's one of the first things I discuss in this report is, you know, what the existing sources can do. And you really can't make up that 119 gallons a minute that we're getting from Cedar number one. I also point out, and this is the lingo that DEP likes to hear, that we are moving further away from Cedar Street. And presumably, we would have better water quality. Those are the buzzwords DEP likes to hear, and we're complying with all of those things. Presumably, we'd have better water quality and, you know, we're further from Cedar Street. So, I think, given the background, DEP may accept a replacement well here. So, this is where we, so we walked down here, there was a observation well. We said, okay, well, let's do a test, a well right next to it, see what, see what that can pump. We actually pumped the observation well. And it looked like pretty good materials. So, we put in the test well. We did see better material in that test well. Again, it was more sand and gravel when you get to the screen zone, which was down at 25 to 30 feet below ground surface. And so, we did a, a one hour, a two hour pump test on the test well and measured water levels in the observation well. And based on that test, we had a specific capacity of the well of seven, over 17 gallons a minute per foot of drawdown, which, in a single well, you need to have a five foot buffer above the well screen. So, we could draw the well down 17 feet based on where the water table was. And using that calculation, we have a well that's 365 gallons a minute without, but because it's a, it's just a small well, it's not the production well, DEP has you add a 0.75 safety factor. So, we're looking at 274 gallons a minute, which is well above what the well is permitted for, which is 119 gallons a minute. So, I think it's a, it's a great location. It's got all the buzzwords that DEP likes. We did collect a water sample. We analyzed it for volatile organics. They were non-detected. Nitrate were 2.4 milligrams per liter, so it's well under the five. Iron was non-detected. And manganese was borderline. We're at 0.045 milligrams per liter. And the drinking water guideline is 0.03 and 0.05 for the secondary MCL. So, again, it's got manganese, but so does the existing well. pH was a little low, but you already do pH adjustments. So, well, it's a good location. We would recommend going forward with permitting the well. This kind of shows where we are. We would probably have to talk to the Conservation Commission to see what would need to be done. Again, we don't have 100 foot buffer from the wetlands. We, as you know, the location hugs the wetlands. You don't have a choice. And one of the things DEP wants to know is, you know, what are your land uses within your 400 foot Zone One? You can see here, as you know, it's all forest and forested wetlands. And then the other thing, I'm not going to give this to DEP. I just wanted to see, like, if it was a new source, you'd be looking at what's in a half mile radius. And I think you all know the junkyard's over here. So, I'm just getting an idea where it is. But I wouldn't give this figure to DEP. They don't need it.
Yeah, that's a bad thing with them.
Yes, we won't go there.
Yeah.
And then the other thing with this well, and I don't know, have you done any MPA testing on any of the wells for microscopic particulate analyses?
Not that I know of. I look into it.
So, that's really, if you're within 150 feet of a surface water body, and wetlands are not necessarily considered a year round surface water body. So, the nearest surface waters are, this is 150 foot buffer around them, the Coal River, there's some bernal pools and ponds that are mapped by the USGS and Mass GIS as a surface water body. So, it would be exempt from micro particulate testing. So, that'd be the, that's the last thing. So, it looks like it's, it's got the water. It's moving further from Cedar Street. It should have better water quality. Now, it's a matter of, you know, I'd like to bring it up to DEP. And I know when I talked to DEP Southeast, Michelle Regan, she approached Bruce Balk in Boston, who is involved in overseeing permitting new wells and Zone One issues. And he would be the guy that would have to approve it. It's got all the right buzzwords.
So, I have a question then. Why would we even consider trying to look at doing these bedrock wells when probably the most important thing for us is to do redo the one?
Is to what?
Is to redo that, the well up front. That should be the priority, right? Because that's going to be the most beneficial. And we need to set a priority because we can't do all of it. There's just no way. That should we not be just continuing forward with that process, the process of permitting that one and put the drilling of that additional through the future, future down the road?
I agree. I mean, I think Cedar well number one, right now, it's pumping about 45 gallons a minute. So, if you can get it back up to 119, DEP won't permit, permit it for more than 119, unfortunately. But.
I think going forward, if the town continues to grow, we're going to have to find some more water. Not, not that, I mean, is this the site, I, you know, I don't know.
I know, because we have other sites in towns that have, in town that have aquifers that we shouldn't be looking at that are on the state zone maps that may have some potential in different places. In fact, where that proposed development behind where I live is a Zone Four, there's an aquifer back there that no discussion has taken place of. So, I, I just think if we can, you know, quadruple the output of getting a Cedar one, that that is the first place we should start. And then continue to look for those other alternatives. But I just don't, if we have a short term problem, I think we need to address it with the most efficient proposal, and that's probably the most efficient proposal.
Would it, would it be beneficial to, to hold on to the site?
Oh, absolutely. I think we should keep, I think we should continue forward with the whole Diaz property anyway, just from a well field protection program that we have all of this additional land. I, I would never give up on what we've already proceeded with, to take the land for future potential that we may have. But I think the first course of action is to get that triple the, the amount of water that we can get out of something we already have.
Emery, how far can you go with the DDP to get them to say, yes, we can do it? Like, do you have to apply and do the permitting? And then they say yes or no? How does that, when will we know if they'll even allow that?
Well, I have the draft report done, so I'll submit that to DEP. And they usually take a couple of months to review it. And we should know within two or three months if they will approve it or not. And I can also just talk to them directly, and I would do that. I would call them directly. And if Bruce wants to have a conference call or Zoom call, we can look at the maps and.
If they say no, they're not going to allow it. Do you overs, I mean, is that no or no? Or you feel pretty confident they won't?
That no is a no.
Okay, no, that's, I didn't know how it works.
But that's, we need to have our ducks in a row before we go to them. So, there's no alternative for them to say, but yes. Whether it be we get aligned with Pat Haddad and get somebody on the state level that's behind us and has some influence with DEP, that we don't just pretend it as a straight out, we need to line our ducks up and make sure that there is no excuse for them to say no. Because the easy way out is to say no. We can't, we can't give them the opportunity. We need to have conservation all cleaned up before we go, any issues that they may have, and have all of our own local ducks in a row. So, they, it's just a rubber stamp when it gets to that point.
And that's also how I've tried to lay out the report, is right up front addressing the Zone One issue. And, you know, where could you go to make up the water? Right now, you have no place to go. And I will say that DEP has been sympathetic to towns and their need for water, the fact that you've already got a well permitted here. I've had cases where, in Seacong, we put in a replacement well, and the Zone One for their existing well and the replacement well actually went into East Providence. And, you know, DEP allowed them to permit the well because, you know, the land uses over there. There were no real adverse impacts to a water supply well. So, given that you've already got a non-compliant Zone One, and I can also, I can talk to them directly, I can give them a call and just see kind of where they're leaning on that. If you had an alternative, you know, they would make you do it if there was an alternative.
Yeah, I wish there was one.
Yeah.
Do you have something you wanted to add?
I just had a couple of questions, more, more longs of timeframe and cost and things like that. What, so to redevelop Cedar one, what kind of timeframe are we looking at till we get, you know, permitted and getting all that stuff done and then actually installing the well?
DEP's been taking two to three months to get the, the replacement well approved. And then it's a matter of drilling the well, doing the 48 hour pump test, and then getting a report back to DEP. And they typically take a couple of months to review that. So, you're looking at another four months or five months there. So, it's about a year you could have the well online. Because by then, then you do the connection and the production.
And then, do you know, does anyone know a rough idea of the cost of redeveloping that well? Do we have any, I mean, I don't know, Jeff, if you know, or does any, I don't know. I, that's why I'm asking, I'm just trying to get a.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not too deep a well. And your pump house is right there. So, I would say we're looking at about $300,000.
Okay.
Three, four hundred, somewhere in there.
We did one in Easton that had a building built. We had chemical there, and it, I want to say it cost 3 million. So, us just being raw water, that's a big, that's a, that's a lot of savings.
Now, and I agree that, you know, this well, the Cedar one well should be, you know, we need water now. It's a, it's a short term, quick fix, obviously. But going into the future and going back into the rock wells and all that, finding another well field per se, that, that, I mean, that there's, sounds like a three, four year venture maybe, instead of just one. And the cost would be, seems like, especially going down into the bedrock. And again, I know nothing about well drilling. So, it seems like, you know, you said five to 10 times the cost. If I'm doing that, off the top of my head, are you looking at, you know?
Million and a half.
Million and a half bucks. Kind of makes everybody tense up a little bit. Is there better options? And I know we bought the land or where we have the land or in process of buying it, whatever it may be. But, and I appreciate Derek's efforts to push a little harder, which I'm all for. But if we're get to the point where if we have to do a bedrock well and it's a million and a half dollars, unfortunately, that would be my only thoughts slash concern on that whole, on that whole deal. Now, if we get the Sonic rig, if we get the Sonic rig out there and we come to find out that we can get through there, you know, down to 30 feet, 35 feet past those boulders, whatever. it, it, you know, down to thirty feet, thirty-five feet past those boulders, whatever they are, and it's, and it's uh, um, you know, we find out it's okay, then, then good deal. I, I think, I don't mind spending a couple of extra bucks, one more try back there. Again, with that Sonic rig and see what we got. And then i- if it's still unfavorable, then we move on. But I'd still like to give it one more shot if we could, if it makes sense, if you, if you guys think it makes sense.
I mean, by buying the property, you're never really giving up on it. So it's there. It's uh, kind of like we can, we can even work on the land, like Derek was saying earlier, you know, before on downtime, we can kind of, you know, working with Anne Marie, she can show us where we need to go if we want to explore that option. It's there.
Yeah, but aren't we limited, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, aren't we limited to the areas that we can drill because of the wetlands itself? Can you go back to the wetland map, just so?
Yeah, the wetlands are a big issue, for sure.
I need to go get a charge driver.
So yeah, so these are your hundred-foot wetland buffers. And there's your four hundred foot, so this is a well field in here, in the blue area.
Yeah. And what's the red area again?
I'm sorry?
The red area is what?
Inside the red, anywhere inside the red, we can have a well field. And it's inside the blue where we would, could do a single well. And then these are all wetland buffers around here, so.
Okay. So the, the hatch. The hatch here, so, yeah.
You know, we went about a hundred and twenty feet north-south, a hundred and twenty feet east-west. But there's a large area over here that we could look at further.
I guess that's just the nature of the, of the land and the layout when you have a nice well down by Cedar One and then you go another. Yeah.
I mean, that's why even for a replacement well, we've always recommended going out and doing testing. When we were doing, um, it was actually one of the Easton wells that we went outside the building and, I mean, where we ultimately found the location, we had a one MGD well. But we hit some areas that were all silt and clay. And we hit some really bad aquifer material like sand and silt. And, and then you have to find that right spot that you have. We did the same thing actually in Seekonk. First well was all silt. And then um, when we finally moved about a hundred feet from the existing well, we had a two MGD well.
Anne Marie, the well you're talking about, it's fifty feet away.
Sorry?
The well you were talking about in Easton, wasn't that about thirty, forty feet away from the existing well too?
Yeah. It was right outside the.
Yeah, it was right next to it. Yeah.
But it's just, it's a good thing we didn't go to our first choice location and put in the eighteen-inch well because.
Right.
Jeff, do you know when our last replacement well was drilled over in Cedar?
Uh, Cedar?
It was like.
Two, Cedar Two, it would be Cedar Two. Two A, B, and C, I think.
Which was how long ago?
You're looking at uh, eighties, I, I believe. Cedar Three was the eighties.
When, when was the last time, this well, the current one we're talking about replacing, when was the last time we redeveloped it?
Two years ago?
Oh, you mean, yeah. Hold on, I have it right here.
So I know Cedar One was constructed in seventy-four and abandoned in eighty-two when you put in one A.
Okay.
I can tell you when we, we re, we did the wells on my computer. It's just, we do them like every two or three years, put it that way. I didn't, I was gonna do it this year.
But it starts at like three hundred gallons a minute and we lose it within six months down to forty. We lose it so fast over there. And that's what, when I talked to the shallow well driller a couple of weeks ago, he had just said the technology now is totally different than what he did. So he would start at like a thirty-six inch casing, something huge with different screeds and different, if the silt material was thinner. Is that true, Marie? Do you know?
Um, so I, I, I'm trying to file, so what did he say you should do?
So Frank said that if we redevelop Cedar One, he would start out at like a thirty-six inch casing, something big, because the material around Cedar One is finer than Cedar Two and Three. So you'd want to go with a bigger diameter to have more of a reservoir, let's say, or more of a, because the water would come into the well slower because of the, what do you call them, fineries or the, material that's there.
He was, yeah. He said the same thing to me.
This is Frank Sullivan?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, Frank's a good driller, so.
Yeah, we had a long talk on the phone the other day and he's supposed to come down in the next couple of weeks because he has to go back to Seekonk. He's down the Cape. And when he passes through, he'd like to meet with myself and Jason and Ed, if water can attend and kind of walk back there and, and kind of give his opinion on what we should do as far as a new development on that part.
I, I do trust Frank Sullivan. I trust Frank Sullivan with um, production wells. Um, I liked MAR for the exploration because they have the right equipment and they're really, they're really good at it. But Sullivan with the cable tool rig has always done a great job with production wells, so.
Okay. Oh, we'll hope that the three hundred, I, I'd love it to get three hundred, only pump a hundred, so we'd have all that extra reserve. But we'll have to see what happens.
Yeah. All right, I didn't know, I didn't know if this has been done in, if this has been done in town. But have you done the desktop study just to identify where the town
Yes.
has potential land that could, could support a Zone One?
Yeah, we, we did that probably seven, eight years ago.
Okay.
There's, there's gotta be, Tina, there's gotta be that study that's around that shows all the different.
I think it's interesting.
Yeah, I think, I think it had, I mean, the Brook Street was on there. There was some other places in town that had aquifer potential.
The town has land on Brook Street.
Yep, right.
And uh, Fisher said I could try to drill wells over in Strawberry Fields.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he did. He, he said, um, there's enough land out back that they're not using, obviously for wetlands or whatever. I, I, I don't know the land. I haven't seen a map of it, so I don't know. But he said, and I had mentioned to him.
Is that on his land, is that on his land or on DI Trust land?
No, it would be the land he's purchasing.
If it's wetlands for him, how do we drill on it?
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to look at the map. But he said we could, we could drill over there and check for water. I don't know how it would work.
Well, if we have a moratorium of no building, then he's gonna have a problem and have to dig wells himself anyway, so.
That's right, Ed. Emery, thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thanks, Emery.
Thank you.
We'll set our priority on what we need to move next because we, as a group, have to talk about the financials of all of it because of the uncertainty of, you know, right now we're selling a lot, we're pumping a lot of water and selling a lot of water. But uh, who knows where people will be six months from now? Because I think we have discussions to have about, because municipalities tend to lag the economic downturn by six to twelve months. So we have to just be smart.
Just, just before Emery jumps off, I just wanted to say that as far as the, um, the cost of everything, you know, obviously, these are all good ideas and we, we like the interaction with the bedrock wells and potential other locations. But, you know, we can help to support you by looking at what's most cost-effective too. Um, you know, as far as, because there's other potential sites. I know that, and Emery, maybe you can speak to this, but down on, south of this site towards Cedar Three, there's much better material down there and this potential land there that could be purchased as well. So, you know, I'd hate to see you try and use a DS property and spend twice as much as you would on property that you potentially are, you know, could own it. It's, and it's in the same location where you just have to connect to the raw water lines down in Cedar.
Right.
So there's other, other potential options.
Hey, perfect.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emery. I'll, I'll call you tomorrow, right?
There we go. Okay, sounds good.
All right, so Chuck, do you want to give us an update on um, the master plan?
Yeah, I, I thought first, um, I know that there was discussion on the moratorium and Jeff wanted to talk to me about that and look into it. And um, it kind of, we talked about a week ago and we were in the process of doing the CIP for the um, capital improvement program for the um, water system master plan. So I kind of shift gears it a little bit because it was more of an urgent issue. Um, but it turns out that Jeff's done a great job in, in doing some optimization in the treatment side of things that, you know, he's running the filters a little bit longer and backwashing less, which is, which is really great. So um, I think that that's good. But um, basically, I think that the concern that I have and Jeff has, and I know you as the board mutually have, is that with people home for COVID nineteen, that there's a lot more water, demand on the system and your demands are going a lot higher. And, you know, there's the concern that, you know, you're gonna reach a breaking point in the middle of the summer when it really gets warm and people are still home. So um, I think that, that there are some, you know, measures that can be taken that are less costly and you can do them right away. The moratorium's a good idea, um, but that can cause you some potential political problems with developers in the town. It, it may not be an issue for you, but um, and we can obviously assist with that. But what I had mentioned to Jeff, and I think it's really important that, because it hasn't been done on the system in a while is you do a leak detection survey. Because you just never know. I, I was telling Jeff about a client that I had that they had a, a water main that broke right next to a culvert. It was a ten-inch water main and it was flowing for a year and they didn't even know it because it was flowing right into the river. And their unaccountable waters went, numbers went through the roof, like up to twenty percent when they were around ten. And they, they didn't even know what was going on. They couldn't find it. And finally, they went out in the system with leak detection and they found this, this leak that had been going on for a year. So um, not to say that that's happening here, but you're, we, during the water supply management process, we looked at your Water Management Act permit, which was um, signed in two thousand and seven and went through to twenty seventeen. And DEP at the time had said that you want to mitigate your unaccountable water to a ten percent goal. And I think, I don't know if you saw on the, in the, the handout that I have here, I put a scope of work in for performing a water audit. And you can see how you're actually increasing in your unaccountable water over the last couple of years towards, and it's averaging like seventeen percent. Now, that could be anything. It could be um, under-registering meters. And, and Jeff and I talked a little bit about that. I think it's a combined approach where we want to look at the potential for leaks in the system through a leak detection survey where the, the district would hire a, um, a firm to come in and do a leak detection survey. But also to look at, Jeff's done a great job at, at looking at the source meters and, and, and getting those calibrated every year. But apparently the, a lot of the large user meters are really old, like, like over thirty years old. And those ones can be under-registering significantly. And I had mentioned to Jeff, we have another client, um, a bigger municipality than yours, that they did a leak detection survey and recovered like three hundred thousand dollars a year in lost revenue because um, they found, or I'm sorry, they did a meter replacement program and they recovered under-registering um, revenue from meters by just replacing, testing the large user meters and then replacing them. So um, you know, I think with the, the Aggie and the power plant there especially, I know that that's, and Jeff, I think you said you tested that recently. But it's really important that um, those meters be running accurately because normally when they're, they get older, they, they under-register so that you're not billing your, your customers as much as you can. And, and you're anticipating that your, 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 your lost water is basically because it's consumed water, but it's just that you're not gaining the revenue for it and you're not registering it. So if you change out the meters, then your consumption figures will go up and your non-revenue water or your unaccountable water will go down.
So we started the meters first before we spend money on leak detection?
Well, I think the leak detection, they should both go together. Those aren't really um, a big cost and we'll need those two components for when we do our water audit. Because it's important to understand where the water is going and, and where you might be losing it and then documenting that unaccountable water um, that's up at, you know, an average of seventeen percent over the last four years, so.
But is seventeen percent, uh, to me, sounds kind of high. Is that normal? Is that above average?
The goal is, the goal is ten, your goal is ten percent actually in your, in your Water Management Act. And that's what Mass DEP's goal is for all water suppliers in Massachusetts. They want you to get down to less than ten percent unaccountable water.
So we're almost double the average, which is not.
That was just twenty point four percent this year.
Yeah, this last year was really high. And like I said, it's trending in the wrong direction, but it might be just a simple fix by doing a water audit, leak detection and meter replacement program. And, you know, I, I had talked to Jeff, I'm gonna put together a request for proposals uh, for him to send out to two or three leak detection firms um, to get proposals in there. I think it's good to prepare an RFP for it because if you prepare an RFP, then they know that they're in a competitive situation, that they have to um, sharpen their pencils. So um, that, that's something that you can do within the month and get them out there, so.
We do have some meters in town that are like seventy years old.
Yeah, and then the, the meter testing is also another thing that's really important. Some, some do both the leak detection and, and the meter testing. But I think, you know, like maybe your top five or your top ten users, if you test the meters, you might find out that they're under-registering by fifty percent and, you know, that's, that would.
We have a program in place to test the, those meters. I know Jeff, you said you tested the power plant, but.
We do. We're gonna. We're gonna initiate that back up. Uh, Greg started that when he became superintendent. And uh, I'm just getting the data back now. Now that Kim is back to work, I haven't. I will work on that tomorrow. And we're gonna send letters out. And with the whole COVID nineteen thing, I was waiting for us to be able to get out there and for other companies to go to these businesses. Anything over two inches, anything under, anything two inches and under now, we own. So if it's two inches and under and it's seventy years old, we're just gonna go in and change the meter. So anything two inches and over, they have to test, I want to say, you know, if it's like a four-inch meter, it's every year. So I'm gonna hold them to that now. Uh, if it's like a two-inch meter, I think it's every two or three years or something like that. But we're gonna, we're gonna jump back on this program and we're gonna get data. And if they don't do the testing, we're gonna require them to change the meter, buy the meter and all of that.
It, it should help that all of that stuff's getting changed over at the Aggie School too, to all new. Because that had to be some of the oldest portion of the system.
It's not gonna hurt, I can tell you that much. It's definitely not gonna hurt.
Yeah, I, that, that was the first thing that I said to Jeff is that that would be a, a high user with old meters.
They're probably our biggest user.
I don't even know if they have their own private wells there or if they're taking all their water from you. I don't know, but.
Hmm, ninety-nine percent of it. They have like one shallow well that does nothing.
So that would be, that would be the one I target first.
Chuck, do you see that we stop doing so hard on the residential meter exchange and focus on the commercial, big ones first? Like change gears a little bit?
That's a great question, Derek. I think that um, what, what Jeff had talked about is the years is that normally your large meters, you want to test every one to three years and your smaller meters every seven years. But your smaller meters, you want to replace them every ten to fifteen years and I think a lot of them are older. So I wouldn't, I, I would suggest that, I'd like to say you do both of them, but the most important ones are the large meters. So, because they're, they're gonna be the ones that are under, and, and from what I understand and what Jeff told me today was that they're the oldest ones too. So that you're probably gonna get your best bang for your buck with those five or ten that are the largest users.
Yeah, there are people in our distribution, so we need to kind of figure out what, you know, we kind of need to refocus on, you know.
Yeah, they're, they're a lot more expensive, but the technology's come a long way with the larger meters. You know, say, a, a lot of these four-inch meters that we have in town don't need to be four-inch anymore. Greg and I have talked about it. They can easily go down to two-inch and, you know, they're not doing, you know, like Princess House. They're not doing what they used to do there. So it's not, they're not a giant consumer, but having the bigger meter there, there's a lot of water loss. So, but just changing that meter out will cost thousands and thousands of dollars. Because just all the plumbing that's gonna have to be done. But I would, you know, we gotta take some of these case by case and see if we can reduce them. Uh, that's actually a benefit to us to reduce them. That's actually a benefit to us to reduce them. But then, then if we go to two-inch, we own them, which is fine. I'd rather have control of them anyway. But, you know, like Princess House, a four-inch meter, they don't, they don't need a four-inch meter. So we, I have a list of meters. We're going to start sending out the letters. I just got to get, I got to get a kind of an accurate accounting of price. It's going to cost us to do all, all the meters that we need to be done. As far as change outs, it's like a two-inch ultrasonic meter is, you know, probably, it's close to $1,000 when all's said and done.
So, so what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see an updated list of these things that we need to do and set them in a priority order. Go out and start signing additional contracts of, let's go out and do leak tests, let's go on do. I'd really like to see in front of me if all we can do is change the meters, if that's the number one priority. We have way too many, in my opinion, we have way too many eggs going around in a basket floating here and there that we really need to narrow the focus of what we do because it's, we just can't do them all. You know, six months ago, we were talking about all the issues we have in the plant and all the upgrades we have in the plant. And now we're talking about all the external stuff that needs to be done. We got to, we really have to, and that's understanding the master plan of what we need to have done. Because we have, we spent, we just spent an hour and a half talking about 17 different things that need to be done. And there's no physical way that we'll be able to do them all. I know for me personally, I need to see a document that lays this all out and then we can timetable to it. And then we can take the next steps to it. This is.
Where are we with the master plan? I mean, pardon me if I missed it earlier, but I mean, how close are we to having this darn thing done?
It's, it's going to be done, it's going to be done in July. And let me just speak to that too, because I know that there was some, a little bit of concern about why it was delayed. I was waiting for the groundwater exploration program to be done so that we could know a little bit better what we could do there with the raw water system. But now that we do have that, we're full boarding to get that done. And to your, to your point, I know that, and I, Jeff seems to have done some operational differences at the plant where, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about maybe not having water, but I don't think that that's the case right now. I think that what we should probably do before we replace the meters is do the water audit because that's, that part of it, we can look at where your non-revenue or unaccounted for water is coming from. It'll kind of target that. And then that will make recommendations on what to do with those meters. If Jeff gives me a list of the meters, the large, 10 largest user meters and the years that they are and what they're configured at. Because if you have four-inch meters, that should be a compound meter at a minimum or even less than that. You know, if their demand is really low and they're running with a four-inch meter, they're definitely under registering. So the compound meters now, it's a dual, dual meter where you have a smaller meter that is on like a one-inch and then maybe a two, two and a half inch for larger flows. And usually with, like, like at the Aggie, if they're only using the bathrooms or whatever during the day and they're not watering, you know, the fields or whatever, it'll go through the smaller meter and it'll be more accurate. So we can make a plan for replacing the meters within the water audit part of things and that would be most important. The two most important projects that are being recommended by the Capital Improvement Program and the Water System Master Plan are the evaluation of the plant and a water audit. So those are the two that I would recommend moving forward with, to your point, Ed. Those are the two most important ones and those are the ones that I provided the scope of work for. That'll handle two things. The water audit will handle your unaccounted for water and try to target what the sources are and then potentially solving those problems with very little expenditure comparatively. It's not more of a capital improvement. It might be just an operational change or it might just be changing out those, those large user meters, which is small compared to a big capital project. But more importantly, what we, what we're learning from the Water System Master Plan, and we talked about it before, is the operational concerns of the treatment plant, but also on the raw water system. You have plenty of raw water in your permitted values that you're not getting out of the wells. And I'm not so sure that it's because the wells are filing or because they need to be redeveloped. We need to do a hydraulic evaluation of the raw water piping because come to find out that when Cedar III is operating at its maximum, Cedar II goes back on its curve and it's just not getting all the flow out of it that you can. So in looking at the tables, and I think I, I put it into the agenda here with the water audit, or I think it was the water audit, that you're not using close to what you're permitted for and you could potentially get that and it might just be an operational change either at the plant or in your raw water system, which won't, you know, it might just be operating your pumps at different points on the VFDs. And that's something that it's not going to cost you anything to do and it might be able to get that water to the plant a little bit more in more, in a higher volume. And secondly, at the plant, there are operational concerns and they're always, there have been for several years. I mean, that plant was, went online and Jeff was saying in 2006. And really, in that 15-year period, there's been nothing put into it other than obvious operation and maintenance costs. But you really need to do an optimization study there and an evaluation of that plant to get it operating the way that it's intended, if you can. And I know that there were concerns about the technology that was used at the time and that might not have been the correct technology. But I think that it's not going to be replaced overnight so that the district's going to have to look at optimizing both the raw water side and the finished water side with the plant at that point in time. So what we would recommend and what is going to be recommended in the Capital Improvement Program is the evaluation of optimization of the plant and then the water audit. The water audit kind of goes hand in glove with the meter replacement and the, and the leak detection program.
So, so what happens, I'm going to explain a little bit about Cedar, Cedar II. What happens when Cedar III is running, at any capacity, Cedar II's drawdown. If you don't have Cedar III running, Cedar II, it doesn't draw down as much and the motors, they're, they relatively, they're at an easy pace. But when Cedar III goes on, which it is every day, Cedar II operates harder due to the piping we have, how it's piped because of corrosion control, the way it was piped back in the day. Everything from Cedar III and Cedar II was piped into corrosion control. So there is restrictions there on Cedar II that make the drawdown and the motors work hard. If it was piped differently, I think we, we're not getting any more water per se, but it would be a little more easy on the wells and the drawdown would probably be better. Whereas Cedar I was piped into corrosion control back in the day. Then they piped it into the raw water line. That doesn't have the restrictions that Cedar II and Cedar III have together. And the same problem we have at Walker Street where they both go into corrosion control. There's a, I think it's Cedar II, I mean, Walker II has a restriction due to the piping conditions. Greg and I have talked about it. Greg knows better than me, obviously than who. But we, we've talked at length about it. There is definitely a piping issue that should have been taken care of when they built the plant, but they just kind of went with it. Well, let's just take the water and go. It didn't repipe anything.
Yeah, I agree with that, Jeff, and it's a great point. Because basically what's happening is, is that as, as III goes on, especially II where it's going through that, that smaller diameter pipe, you got a lot of head loss and resistance. It's pushing it back on its curve and the heads go way up and the pumps are working like crazy and they're not there.
You're increasing head pressure when Cedar III goes online. That's basically what you're telling me.
Basically Cedar II works harder.
Right, because the head pressure is higher, so it has to overcome the head pressure to push it.
To push it.
And do it internally with our employees?
Greg and I have talked about it, yeah. Yes. Yep.
Yeah, and I think that.
Walker's the same thing.
Yeah, I think that what we really just want to do is we want to do a hydraulic model of that, all that piping, what it's doing right now and then make a recommendation on what you'd have to do to, you know, install a piping. And as Jeff said, that that's stuff that, you know, the district can do on their own.
I mean, as far as like, you know, Cedar II goes into the corrosion control and that's how it's monitored. And so all this, every, the flow meter is in corrosion control at Cedar II. So it's, it's not as simple as just changing some pipes out. We'd have to reconfigure how it's metered. There is a few other things involved.
Okay, so I guess, I don't want to take all your time. I know we, we've taken a lot of it. But as far as the, that was the recommendation that we made. I dropped task orders off with Jeff for both of these studies right now. And I, and I wanted him to take a look at it from a financial standpoint to see what was doable now. You know, obviously, to do an optimization study of the treatment plant and the raw water system, it's, it's a pretty good effort. As you saw the scope of work and there's a lot going on. So that's the project that we would recommend going forward with first and then the water audit second. And we'll complete the Water System Master Plan within, by the end of July and then we'll have that information for you.
Okay. All right, so Jeff, just review what, what you're going to recommend and then meet with Tina to look at what the funding source might be, potential funding sources could be and then present it to us and then we'll have a discussion on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
And then if, if you have any, any questions for me, the scope of work is in the agenda. You guys can take a look at that. If you have any questions about that or what we're thinking about doing, by all means, give me a call. And I'd be happy to follow up with you. And then, you know, obviously, I'm available at any time. And then Jeff and Tina, if you have any questions about, you know, the task orders and what we need to do, you know. The other thing too is that, you know, depending upon the available funding, we can always break out some of the, do the raw water stuff first and then the finished water on the, on the optimization study. So we're flexible there, whatever you guys need us to do.
Well, we're 21 days from one budget season ending and another one starting. So, you know, and I know we don't have another regular meeting scheduled before the end of this fiscal year. We just have our annual. So we'll, we'll have to take a look at it and see what's next year's budget. And then, you know, some of it may have to wait a little bit depending on how quickly free cash gets certified this year.
Sure. No, I get it. And, you know, you guys are, obviously, the concern is, funding is always a big one, so. But you let, let us know what we can do to help.
Okay. Thanks, Chuck.
All right. And like I said, if you have any.
Anything else for Chuck before the leaves?
Should be good.
All right. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Take care.
Bye, Chuck.
Bye-bye.
All right, I just shared, I shared the agenda, so now you guys, you guys can actually see it. The next up is approve the minutes of prior meeting of May 12th. Do you need me to pull that up or are you guys all set?
All right.
There's a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12th monthly meeting.
So moved.
On discussion here, not all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Correspondents, Tina, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Jeff?
No, no.
Any correspondence in the hands of the commissioners? Financial conditions, operating budget to actual balance. Tina, you shared that, correct?
Yes.
Who else?
Yeah.
Let me see if I have that here. Excuse me. No, that's not it. That's not it. That's not it. I must not have, I don't think I have that one open, so I can't share it. Everyone should have received it, so if you have any questions on it.
Let me tell you what the totals were.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the total income's at 97% and total expenditures are at 83.3% with a month left.
So.
On schedule.
Drive on schedule, okay. And then Tina, can you just quickly review the receivables?
Yep. So, yeah, standard receivables, $63,922. Month commitments, $5,717. And receivables was $10,607.
Okay, and then on the agenda, you see here listed the warrants and then those were in an attachment that was sent out. So is there a motion to accept the financial report?
So moved.
On discussion here, not all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Motion to approve the warrants as submitted by the district accountant.
So moved.
And, and as attached. Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion here, not all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Superintendent's report.
Like I always say, I'll leave a brief. So I've been in contact with Somerset, Fall River and Swansea. And they want to do, they want to, they're in conjunction with their MVP program. They want to bolster interconnections within each town. Obviously, we have one with Somerset. Fall River has an interconnection with Somerset. Swansea has an interconnection with Somerset. The, the dollar value on it, it hasn't come out yet. It's, it's like 75% funded, 25% cost. I was kind of told it would be around $10,000 to, we have a, we have two, we have one connection with Somerset on Chase Ave. It would need a little bit of work. Obviously, I signed to go forward with the exploration of it. But obviously, if it's not cost-effective, this is your decision.
Yeah, what, what's the benefit?
The benefit is we would have an interconnection with Somerset. We also have one with Taunton, but it would just be inter, whatever they call it, municipal agreement with all these towns. It's well-funded. It's, it's, it would go through pretty quick. The benefit would be we just, we have an emergency in the connection with Somerset pending ever needing it.
So, but what does it change from the connection we have now? What, what upgrade does it to?
The connection we have with Somerset.
So let's see what an additional benefit we get out of it for spending the money.
The, the problem we have with the connection with Somerset is our pressure is higher than Somerset's. So in order to use that connection, Somerset has to raise their storage tanks to overcome ours, our pressure. So there is some work that needs to be done there to make it workable. I mean, we have, we, it can be done, but he needs to fill his tanks pretty much because our pressure, we're about two pounds higher and having the connection.
Don't, don't you have the same problem with Taunton?
Yeah, except we have the pump. We don't have a pump on this one. There's nothing in the pit. It's just, it's just system pressure on both sides. Taunton, we have the motor.
Yeah, okay.
And the other, the other part of the program was I had asked if it would be feasible to do a GIS mapping for us. And they said yes, they allowed it to the program. And this cost would be around $4,000 to us and be about, I don't know, around a $10,000 or $20,000 cost total. But he was saying, yeah, it'd probably cost you around $4,000 to do a full GIS mapping of our system.
Who, who's driving this whole trade?
This is uh watered in current and and Fall River.
Fire is being driven by Fall River?
Pretty much Fall River and Somerset. Uh, my. My uh. My gut tells me they really, they want to sell water. That's what my gut tells me. I know Swansea is in need of water. I don't know this. I'm just, they they've they've expressed interest in the past, so uh.
Well, I I don't want to spend money so they can sell water.
Well, no, no, I I totally get it. Uh, the, you know, the GIS part of it intrigues the heck out of me. Um, that would be nice for us to have, uh but. Yeah, it's entirely up to you guys. I'll present it when it's done. Um. Again, that's one thing. The other part is is the town is doing its own MVP program and we're we're involved in that. Uh, so. You know, we have other avenues to get the GIS. Uh, I've been talking with Mallory. She's been forwarding me some uh. Funding sources for different projects that we may need. Uh, and us being involved in the MVP project makes us a more suitable candidate. To receive grants, uh not a hundred percent grants, but grants nevertheless. Um, so we're working on that as well.
Okay.
But the plant's running pretty good. We're pumping a lot of water. Uh, we've started the odd even water ban. Obviously, that's a yearly thing now. It's never going away. Uh, I've had the employees out there uh monitoring it and and trying to. We're trying to really police it, but I I I think this will end up policing itself once the word gets out enough. We put it, you know, Tina put it in the paper. Uh, we posted in several places, but you know, a lot of people still don't know. Uh, that's why we're sending warnings and it's not, you know, a direct fine.
Are we putting anything, are we putting anything in the mailer or when we send bills out? Are we putting any a notice in that as well or no?
Yeah, we're gonna. We're putting them in the CCR report, which should go out either the end of this week or first of next week. So there'll, it's gonna be a notice in the CCR report.
I learned today that it's this thirty one days in a month that screws up the odd even on your system at home. Cause I'm watering on the wrong day right now.
No way, not you. Come on.
We're uh, it makes a big difference to have it uh, people not doing it every day. I mean, as long as you're odd even, uh you know, one or the other, it's just, it's much, it 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 leaves the the burden on us here. And not allowing anymore.
I set mine to go Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday, and then when the date changes, it screws it up.
Yep. Yeah, it's not, you know. The uh technology maybe with the uh sprinkler companies haven't, hasn't come around.
I don't know. I think mine's okay. Mine.
Yeah, your your house is a little newer than mine.
Yeah, as I say, mine's set up on a on a thing where I set the date and the time and the year and everything.
Yeah, I I have to set mine by days of the week.
Yeah. Ed probably gets out the chisel and has to chisel the timer.
Exactly, exactly. It's it's cave, I'm just like the caveman.
That's all I have.
Find somebody to buy my house. I won't have to worry about it anymore.
I know, I know. Maybe if you free this sprinkler system, it'll uh it'll sell.
Yeah, that's, I'm trying to grow, I'm trying to grow grass from that new septic system I had to put in.
Ugh. That's all I got.
Any questions on superintendent's report? Old business. Have they stopped shutting down Center Street on the Bristol County Aggie project?
Oh, yeah, yeah, long, uh, so that the water main is passed. They're still working on the temporary due to some uh other issues they have as far as they're laying. Laying pipe that I, it's almost hard to explain, but they they basically, I think, a lot of what they've done over there is they put the cart before the horse. And um, it's slowed them down a little bit. So. The water main's good. It's all passed, passed bacterial sampling, but they cannot put it online yet due to uh some other water mains that they need to put in on their property. So we're waiting.
Okay. It's alright, we, you know, that's a good project for us at the end of the day, so.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions on the Aggie?
New meters, uh, already have. One, so that that project is going good. It's 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 going good.
Yeah, good. Annual election warrant. Tina, what do you need us to do?
Oops, that's all set.
That's all set?
Sorry about that. Didn't realize I had that on there still.
Uh, clothing allowance was. Has have people spent their clothing allowance?
Yes.
I believe they're starting to.
Yeah, I think everybody's almost got it all done.
Okay.
I think Mike needs to spend a little more. I mean, he's one of, he's got the most, I think.
Especially after you told me what size pants he wears today. He needs some new clothes.
Yes.
Uh. And then I, is, do we need further discussion on the credit card?
Well, you know, not tonight, but we'll leave it on there for another month.
Don't forget the annual meeting warrant.
Oh, oh, yeah, and then the annual meeting warrant is, that's next week, right?
Yeah, we need to um approve it tonight so I can get it posted.
Is there a motion?
Need seven days.
Is sent to us by the by the clerk treasurer.
So moved.
On discussion, here not all of the favor, all of the opposed, the eyes have it. And that is.
With the uh real quick on on the election for next week, are we all set with the protocol, but we have to follow COVID wise, all that fun stuff?
Yes, I've I've been in contact. I've been talking to uh Sue. Uh, who just ran the uh election on Saturday.
Okay, yeah, it went pretty well. They had it organized pretty good on on Saturday.
Yep.
Did she, did she have some extra pens?
I have, um, we can use pencils and I have a box of like the golfing pencils. So I'm gonna make up bags with the gloves like she had and the pencils so they can just chuck them when they're done, throw them away.
And then for the um annual meeting, that will be at?
Still Old Town Hall at seven.
And we'll set up the chairs six feet apart?
Correct.
And hopefully we don't get a thousand people.
I don't see it.
Okay, perfect, perfect. I I'm okay if we do it outside.
I don't think. Well, that's what I do.
That was one of the discussions on annual town meeting was doing annual outside and for the town, but. Um, so, okay.
Can we do it out behind um in that little pavilion behind Old Town Hall?
I I guess we could. I don't know if we really have to. I can sit six feet away from you, Derek.
Alright, no, I just didn't know because the picnic tables are already in there. I didn't know if it was easier.
It's it's an it's an option. It's an option, but yeah, I think we have a ton of warrant for being at Old Town Hall, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I posted it at Old Town Hall.
Yeah, if we ran into a problem that there were too many people there, we could always move back there.
Yeah.
Probing the same problem. So, alright, uh, new business. Superintendent's review of contract, clerk treasurer's review of contract. So I know Jeff sent out um. A litany of of things to discuss on that. Um, technically, when does the contract expire, Jeff? At the end of June?
Yeah, I think it was June, however many days on June thirty, thirty first.
His contract is good for three years, so twenty twenty two, but you're supposed to review it um for the end of the this fiscal year.
Okay, okay. So I I'd like a little more time to review what you sent to us, Jeff. I don't know about everybody else, because I have some questions about. Um, putting in a whole step program like that on a superintendent's contract when the contracts are um three years long. Uh, and this and the salaries are reviewed. So I I just have some questions on that that I want to look at a little further. I mean, it's not online. Um, but you know, step programs are usually put in place for uh longer term union contracts and not specifically. Basically, those are personal services contracts that that we utilize when we hire on and employment contracts. Um, but I I have no problem looking at it that way, but I I just want to do a little more research on my own.
Okay.
And I have, I mean, I have no issues with the request, obviously. Uh, you're doing a a good job and. Do we knew, do we have to do a, is it in your contract to do a yearly review?
Yes.
At the end of, at the end of every year or in June of every year or something like that? Um.
I don't know if it was just for this June or.
Well, I think we do a salary review every year.
Okay.
I think that's how his was set up.
Yeah, yeah, um, but I think you 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 make a point there, Jason, that we should probably have a, as part of the salary review should be a um. Evaluation review, job evaluation review.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So, uh. I know in the past, in the past, we have, we're we're pretty open to discussing it straight up and, you know, in a lot of places, they follow what the union gets is what the superintendent. But we we have uh chosen in the past not to follow that process, so. Um, I think doing it as a true evaluation process, we should be evaluating every employee anyway. Um, and you know, and raises should be merit based, but unfortunately, we have to follow the union contract.
Wait, again, we have to follow the union contract with the superintendent?
Well, no, 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 for all of our, for the rest of our employees that are under the contract. Me, I prefer to do merit based evaluations. But the only people we have the opportunity to do merit based evaluations is the superintendent and the clerk treasurer. Those are the only two that we we have control over to do it that way.
Right, but we have the, with Jeff, with Jeff's contract now, right, and we do the yearly review.
Yes.
Review, we have authority to to change that at any time, correct? Am I understanding that? He doesn't have to wait for the three year contract to be over before it takes takes a.
No, we, no, no, that's correct. I think a salary evaluation is yearly. You can extend the years of his contract every year, but he has to, you know, the the tre, the. The treasurer and the treasurer collect, the clerk treasurer and the superintendent are appointed on a yearly basis. They, we would be breaking the the contract if we don't reappoint them and and would have some financial liability based on the contract. So that's why it's all, that's why they're normally only three years and no further than that.
But we can, we can, we can put extensions on.
Correct.
In exact. Okay.
Correct, correct. So. Uh, I just want to review it. I just want to review what Jeff sent out a little more before we finalize that. We could, uh, you know. It's all retro, it'll be all retroactive anyway, so. Are you okay with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I'd prefer you review it. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so Derek, do you have anything to add on that?
Oh, there should be, no, it should be fine. So his contract started in April twenty ninth, but his basically review was by the end of every June thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So so the contract's really three years and a month.
Yeah, because he started in April instead of July first.
Okay. Now, do we do, and I'm probably getting into the weeds a little bit here, but do we do the review uh in us three in person with Jeff and and Tina, or how does that, how does that usually happen?
Yeah, I I I would prefer that's how we do it.
Okay, that's fine. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I I agree. It's, I prefer that's how we do it. And then um, but I think we should do the same thing. I think that. I I'm assuming starting next month, we can go back to in person meetings. Since things have, things are open now. That we scheduled at our next meeting to do um an executive session for personnel reviews. And do a separate one with Tina and a separate one with Jeff, and we can have the some discussion about what their um. Uh, merit raises will be as part of that because there is no number set in the contract. Um, then we 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 can discuss that at that time unless anybody has an objection.
Sounds good.
Okay, alright, thank you. Anything else on the new business?
Um, real quick, um. Social media policy that I sent out or Mallory got or sent out, um, and I think you sent out another one too. Um, did anyone have a chance to review that or think about it in light of some that happens? I think it was like two weeks ago now or a week ago now?
Yeah, so, you know, I think we reviewed that thing when they put it out a couple of years ago and just never did anything with it.
I I'd given it to everybody around December with all the policies.
Yeah, so I I think we really just had, if if we're all in agreement with it, I think we just have to adopt it as a policy.
So, oh, you gave it to us, Tina, not the workers?
Yeah, I had made it into the. Water district and and giving it out at one of the meetings. I can forward it to you. I'll find it and send it to you again. I've gotten it from the town and I just revised it.
Why don't we put it on the agenda for next month and if and if what Tina sends out that's been. Formatted to the Diamond Water District, we adopt it as a policy at our next meeting.
Yeah, I I'm fine with that. I I think that's the best thing to do. Uh.
Yeah.
It's just coming from the town. It's all vetted, all.
It clearly states and and you know, hey, I I get it. It was a, it was a mistake and, you know, social media has its its good thing and its bad things and. You know, I press buttons on my computer that I don't mean to press sometimes too, so, you know, but having a policy in place covers us all.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, do we require the employees to uh review and sign like say every July first?
Um, we don't do that with any of our other policies. Once it's a policy, it's in place, it's part of our um directives.
Okay.
Uh, we'll we'll put it in the policy book though.
Well, we need to finish that book. I know the COVID thing kind of really, but we need to make the policy book, correct, Tina? Still, we never did that, correct?
Correct, yeah. I've gotten all the policies together and we were supposed to review them and it has a signature page that everybody received and read them.
Yeah, I think we only have to give it to, once they've signed it, they would, they've accepted the policies.
Alright.
Anything else on that?
No.
Jason, uh, Derek and Jason, anything else on the new business?
No, we, no, the only thing that we wanted to talk about is the moratorium. Was that still on the new business or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be new.
So Jeff, what, would you, would you like us to take a formal vote to adopt the moratorium until we are able to. Uh, dr, significant, what, how does it have to read where it's legally enforceable?
So uh, I did end up talking to Matt. And. We may have to take a few steps before we necessarily adopt it as a group, or as you adopt it. Um, so I need to look into that tomorrow. Uh. Now, it it also may open up a can of worms with the EP. But I'm gonna talk to them. Uh, I'll talk to them tomorrow anyway, just to just to get a feeler. Um. Wrote it down. I'll send you the email from Matt um that I got. And you can review it. Um, there, you know, he has case studies where a town adopted it without. Uh, contacting DEP, so now. Day faced.
They were sued.
Yeah, yeah, it it held, and then they lost, so.
So just so you know, you have the backing of us, how about we make a motion that we allow the superintendent to review and continue to look into the steps. Of a proposed moratorium.
Yeah, that's fine. That works perfect. So moved.
In a second.
A discussion here and not all of the favor, all of the opposed, the eyes have it. I just don't want Jeff, you moving forward, not, and then we all of a sudden have some other, you know, epiphany. That you waste all the time.
I just want to make sure all our ducks are in order.
Yep, absolutely. Well, I think that's that's the intent of the motion is we make sure we have our ducks.
I I should have asked Chuck when he was on the phone uh earlier, but slipped my mind until just now, but. He he was, he was boarding the moratorium, correct, from what I understood? Um, but at the same time, and I think I think I talked to Derek about this a little bit. and I think, I think I talked to Derek about this a little bit yesterday, but when we asked him about strawberry fields, he said we had enough water to supply strawberry fields if it came online. Now all of a sudden he's in support of the moratorium because we don't have enough water. And, and I don't know, is it because of the, the COVID situation and everyone being home? Is it going to continue this way? I'm all for moratorium if it makes sense, yeah, but I don't want to jump the gun and look foolish because we're, we're doing it based off of COVID numbers when everything's supposedly going to go back to normal in a couple of months. I, I don't know. I, I just want to make sure we're, we have, like, like you said, our ducks in a row, our, our T's crossed and I's dotted, so we're not harsh in the decision in, picking the gun.
Yeah, I think, I think Jason, it's like everything else. It's what is the establishment of the new normal? And until we establish what the new normal is, I think that's how we proceed. Is we proceed with caution, but knowing that we don't know what the new normal is, that we are taking the precautionary steps towards the potential of new normal. That's why we're not totally putting it in place yet.
I mean, I guess at the end of the day, if it does go through it, it helps us in the long run too.
Right.
Um, because we're taking the pressure, even if it does go back to normal, uh, it still takes the pressure off of the plant, especially in the summertime too. So. So I guess there, now that I think about it a little bit more and I'll think about it some more too, but it, it, it'll, it'll help us in the long run.
So what, what I, what I tried to express to Chuck is, is uh, the, the water supply we have, not even take the plan out of the equation, but the water supply that we have and what I've noticed is prolonged, uh, uh, high usage, like what we're doing now. It doesn't, uh, we don't hold up well. Yeah, uh, so it's almost like if this is the new norm, then I don't even think odd evens in place anymore. I think it's going to be worse. So it, i- it's, it's a, you know, a moratorium is just, we gotta, we gotta kind of regroup and figure out what's the next step because I'm more worried about what we're going to look like in August because we started our, our heavy pumping a month, over a month early. And I know what we look like in August and September to begin with.
Yeah.
And usually October, we're like, oh, but then we get rain and we're good, but now it's going to be more like a month ahead of that. So it's, it's a little, you know, times are a little uneasy.
Yeah.
As far as the town is concerned, we have Mallory's back and we have Jim Aggy's back and we have the selectmen backing. So the town's concerned, we're all, everybody understands what we're going through and has our back too. Which plays a big role.
I think, I think as far as the moratorium would go, uh, I, I was reading and thank you Tina. Tina got me some information on the, the last moratorium, which was just before the plant was built. And there was guidelines where, uh, you'll have to discuss, but you will, the, the district allowed like four ma lots to be built. And you would supply water to that, but you wouldn't supply anything to any new development. So that's something you guys are going to have to talk or two about, and I'm going to have to give you data saying, well, we can't supply anything. I mean, unless somebody's, maybe their well goes dry and they, they can't do anything.
Right.
But maybe you'll, you'll have to set in place, you know, really, really detail.
And, and, and I think, and I think we upfront have a discussion with DEP because it really ties into us being able to get additional water as well as the operational things that we talked about tonight. So it's not like we're not doing anything to get out of it. But I think, I, I, I think keeping them in the loop on what the discussion is, especially during this time, is that is the right thing to do.
Well, I did talk to DEP. I mean, I mean, I just think I need to talk to somebody that, that this there, this is their specialty.
Yeah, yeah.
He didn't seem overly concerned about it. He, he seemed to, to me, he said, you do what you want to do. It's out of mine. I don't, we don't, we trust.
Uh, but we know somebody like, like Beecher, who's trying to help develop me, is going to run straight to the state and it's going to be way, it's going to be seven levels above that person you talked to at DEP.
Right, right, right.
Putting the bill and having a major issue unless.
We've got to take your money out of his pocket. That's when he's going to start screaming.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. So.
I mean, he can only get so much, so.
All right, keep us, keep us posted.
All right.
All right. Any other, any other new business? Uh, announcements, right? Next regular meeting will be July 14th. Does that work for everyone?
Yep, that's fine.
That's so possible.
Well, Jason, I don't know. How was your schedule, Jake?
Uh, hold on a second. I was just answering a work email. I apologize.
You guys going back on the road, Jake?
Uh, local, yes. Out of state, no. So I, I will be thinking till the end of June, staying in Massachusetts. So. July?
Yeah, July 14th right now.
Let me look here real quick. I can do July 14th, yes.
What time?
Um, four o'clock, five o'clock, somewhere near.
Four o'clock's fine. The, the, uh, I, I'm assuming since, uh, the state has allowed all this Zoom stuff, that if someone can't make a meeting, they can, um, video in now.
Yeah, I bet.
So. Um, and then annual election is next Tuesday from 12 to 7?
Who's running?
District? Somebody up for election? Yeah, you got it, you got it easy.
I put some signs up.
Yeah, win with win.
I saw you one, did you put more than one sign up?
Yeah, I put like 10 up.
So, okay, that's all I put. I think that's all I had last time was 10. Uh, and then the district meeting will be Thursday, June 18th at 7 o'clock at Old Town Hall. Uh, any public input? Since no one else is here, I'm assuming not. Is there a motion to adj?
So moved?
In a second.
On discussion here and not all is in favor, all is opposed? Thank you all. Enjoy. Jason, good luck next week.
Dana, thanks, y'all.